I'm really excited about this project. It's not far away from my house up in the Highlands neighborhood. And Terry, if you can go ahead and kick us off.
Good evening, Council President. Gorman, council members. We're very excited to be here tonight. I'm Terry Higashiama. I'm the Community Services Administrator. And this has been a project that we've been working on for a few years now. Lots of partners, lots of positive energy. Excuse me. And let me introduce the people that are here tonight. I'm going to have them stand and introduce themselves because what's great about this is the partnership with the school district and the city, with the families and the children we're working with. So I'm going to start with Carol.
Carol Henry, Design Concepts. We're the landscape architects working on the project.
Leslie Betlock, City of Renton, Parks Planning and Natural Resources Director.
Rich Darkey, Executive Director.
Doug Ducharme, BLRB Architects.
Todd Black with City Renton Parks Planning and Natural Resources.
John Knudsen, Assistant Superintendent with the Renton School District.
Terry Riston and Riston Superintendent at Renton School District.
Kelly Beamer, City of Renton, Department of Parks Director.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you all for joining us tonight.
So obviously, this is very passionate for all of us working on this project. We've been very fortunate that many people have stepped up to be sponsors with us, and the list keeps growing as we're out asking for money in dollars. Currently, along with the school district and the city of Renton, we have the First Financial Northwest Foundation, as you know, gave us a large donation, Renton Rotary, Renton Housing Authority, the Lions Club, Renton Lions Club, King County grant that we got recently, the Renton Community Foundation through our Custer Fund will be putting dollars in. And also Edlin Landscaping has come on board to help us with the planting and the landscaping. So that's just the list to date. We have others that we're out meeting with and moving that forward, so we want you to be aware of that. Now, when you take on a project like this and you're creating new territory and new ground, there's always a few little challenges. And I do want to thank our city attorney's office and especially Gorman, who has been very patient, and this is a new learning experience for him. And when you're building something on two properties, all of us have to be mindful of the risk and the liability and how it's going to work. But I looked at the group here tonight, and I thought if you totaled up the number of playgrounds and years that all of us have been doing playgrounds, it would, well, we're not going to go with our age, but we'll just tell you, it would be a lot of experience. So we will get through the details of the inter-local agreement because we all are on the mission of getting this playground built. So that's the key, and we're working forward on that. So it's, and we're having a good time. Everybody smiles. They're very patient. Also working with us is Peter Renner from our facilities, who is working on the restroom and the other part from there. So lots of people working on this from different aspects, as is the recreation staff that are located up at North Highlands Community Center. So I'm very fortunate to work with great people. And when I, we started this idea, it seemed like it would be very easy and going forward. But what we're really fortunate is we were able to find a person who designs these type of playgrounds, and she is the first, I think, one of the best there is in the whole United States. And so Carol Henry is here tonight. She works for Design Concepts. She is out of Colorado, and she flew out here tonight to help us and work on some other portions of the playground as we're going forward. She worked on over two dozen Denver Public Schools' learning landscape projects. I love that her passion stems from belief that playground should be an integral part to learning as a classroom itself, that when kids go out and play on those playgrounds, it's another experience, and it's really actually about the joy of play along with their learning. She was the, recently completed the Discovery Playground in Spokane Valley, Washington, which is an amazing playground, a North Glen Sensory Playground in North Glen, Colorado. And she's also working with Bellevue on their accessible playground, although ours will be better. I just want to be clear about that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay, that's what has to be said. So we're very fortunate that she's here tonight because we want to make sure we keep you updated on this as we're moving forward. And I think you'll enjoy her presentation, and we want to be open for questions at the end after she does her presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Get this started. There we go. I feel really fortunate to be working on the very first joint project between the city of Renton and Renton School District. And we're going to make it a good one. This is a truly unique, one-of-a-kind playground that is going to meet the needs of all the children at Meadowcrest as well as for the community. And it will be like no other that you have. So I want to talk a bit about it. We have, excuse me, been, had a number of meetings with the school district, with the city, with the school itself, and the, all the therapists and teachers at the school to make sure that we're really hitting what we need to do on this project and getting it right the first time. We have had a number of, several public meetings. I know a number of people here have come to the meetings and had a lot of good energy and interest in that. We're trying to make this not just an accessible playground, but a truly inclusive one. And that is, that's key, that it, it's not enough that you can get to every piece of equipment. You need to be able to play side-by-side on them. So I think we've worked hard to achieve that. Both the city and the district have put a lot of energy into this, and I'm very, very appreciative of that because it is, it's different, it's a challenge. And as Terry had mentioned, there are a number of contributors for this. So, you know, not just the city and the school, but really a diverse section of the community has come forward and done a lot to make this project happen, and we're very grateful for The public meetings, the first one was especially well-attended. We had a number of parents and, that have special needs children, as well as, you know, you all from the city and from the school district. Second meeting was a little more informative, just for the city and the school district, but I, there's a lot of, a lot of good energy and attention that's gone to this. With this inclusive playground, we want kids to be able to come out and explore and enjoy themselves and to play side-by-side. We want to engage, you know, feeling of social play, of free play, of physical play, of imaginative play. And, you know, we're not just giving some swing sets and some, and some F4 square. We're really taking it so that, you know, the senses will be engaged and kind of regardless of your ability, there's something for you to do there. And I suspect you're familiar with the location, but the first slide shows the old Hillcrest Learning Center's school district, or the school building. At the lower side of the slide is the North Highlands Neighborhood Center. The senior housing is to the lower right. And then in between, we have this, this big area that had two very separate playgrounds. And they weren't especially accessible. They, you know, they, they were good, but they had a big fence running through them, and we're going to, we're going to fix that. This, the next slide shows, you know, we have really over an acre of site that will be combined to make one, one really terrific opportunity. We, as we began, we talked about what we, what everybody wanted and needed. We talked about, you know, we put together a master plan that, that we all had a lot of input in, again, to make sure that we hit the needs, we got it right as we were going forward. And the next few slides will be showing how these areas come together. We have an area that's centered on early childhood kids. We have an area that is for the older children. We have an area that's kind of a nature play area that is, you have outdoor classroom, you have the areas where you can get a little bit dirty when you go out and play because so often, you know, you're, you're in a very controlled environment, and kids just don't get to play with sticks and, you know, really experience nature a little bit more. And then we also have some climbing, a climbing area. As we walk through, this, this first slide is of the, of the early childhood piece. And we've got this really fabulous custom caterpillar that, as you first come in, that'll be kind of a signature piece. We've got a playhouse, we've got things for kids to spin on, climb on, but it's really centered for the, for the younger children. As, as you, as you go, we've got a, an area that is a wavy walk, that kids can roll up and down on their trikes and wheelchairs and kind of go around and around and around, which also has musical play and more sensory pieces to it. This is a nature play area with outdoor classrooms, and you can see we've got, we've got rolling hills, we've got places to have small, small classes, and, you know, logs and rocks and that kind of thing. We have the older children's and climbing area. This is a view from, from the older children's area back into the climbing area. It's the one area where we've got a little topography on the site. And so we've got a climbing wall that's accessible, meets all ADA standards. We have swings that, that you can come in with your wheelchair, you can come in and sit and swing. We've got easy slides, we've got more challenging slides, but the whole, the whole wall is We have a number of, we have several shelters, we've got some painted, painted play, and we've got a restroom that will be really nice, both for the after-hours as well as the, the school. We are almost ready to complete the design process. We're having what's probably our last group meeting tomorrow before we go out to bid. We should be bidding late winter and then start construction in spring, and then playground should open in the fall, hopefully at a similar time from the school open. So we'll have this fabulous school and a playground that is like no other. We're quite excited about it. We have, the city has a website that you can check on to, for, to donate and to find more information about the playground. But I really appreciate everyone's efforts, and I hope everybody comes to see it when it opens because it is, it is something fabulous. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Do we just awe you?
If I can just say something. You know, I'm just amazed with some of the illustrations of some of the pieces that are going to be included. I looked at those, those hills, those rolling hills, and I can see that would be a lot of fun. And, and also some of the climbing structure and how that looks. So, yeah, I'm really excited to see, to see it progress and see something happen. And I do love to swing myself.
We have several types for you, so.
Okay, good. The one that's on the screen right now with the little green seat might be a little small for me, so hopefully you have some of some other sizes.
We have a good variety.
Great, thanks.
Mr. President?
Yeah, please.
So you're really thinking we're going to have this this September?
Yes, sir.
That is amazing.
It is amazing. We're sticking with our, our, our goal.
That is an absolute testament to your efforts and partnerships and everything. It was, wasn't it a year ago, was a gleam in your eye?
It's been a little longer than that, but, you know, some of these are sole proprietor's pieces that will be built, especially for this playground. So some of those we'll take, and it's getting that, all of those things matched up. They're sole source, along with the things that you can just buy. We're still trying to raise money. That's the, if I raise more money, then we can get all the things that are on our alternate list. So I want the public to know that they can certainly donate, and we take any amounts of donation toward the playground we'd be happy to.
You want to say that again to make sure that the audience? We are accepting donations and we have.
And I want to say it also. But yeah, any donation helps us add to the pieces we'd like to make sure we can add and keep in the playground in our bottom dollar. So that's our goal. We want to add all those pieces in there.
Congratulations. Very nice work.
This is an amazing team working on this. I can take no credit. They just, the vision and all coming together and really breaking the barriers for one playground where we can close the gate during the day and only have it open for the school when they're in school and change the gate. You know, this is about the partnerships, making us during really tough economic times be able to build things that by ourselves, it would be much smaller, much less, and certainly wouldn't meet all the needs that we're able to do with this. So it's about a lot of people thinking out of the box.
Is that partnership. And yeah, it's not just for bad economic times either. It's for all the times, and it's a true testament of what we can do when we, when we put our agencies together and share our vision and come up with something that's just wonderful for the community. Thank you so much.
Mr. President?
I think there's more comments, yeah.
Oh, not a comment. Well, I guess I could, just to say that it looks like a wonderful development that's going to occur on the Highlands and a population of kids that are going to just go absolutely nuts over it. It's great. Just wondering if it's possible for me to get a copy of your slides? I'd love to be able to take a look at some of the detail a little bit more.
It's in our Dropbox.
Oh, great. Super. I already got it.
They've already set it up, yeah. It should be there. Not let us know.
Mr. President?
Well, yeah, Terry, I'm sure if somebody donates, which I, we obviously are making the big pitch for them too, that there will be some recognition of that around the park, you know, so it could, if you wanted to give something to, to the community and there'll be something there so that people know who donated.
In the larger donations, there will. For the smaller donations, there will be, you know, a thank you to our community.
Right.
But they'll have the benefit of knowing that they helped build this playground.
I'm trying to get the bigger donations.
Donate, yeah.
I mean, I think, I think there's somebody listening tonight that knows somebody that has a foundation, and they've got money, and they want to think of where can I, where can I really put, put it where it'll be of good use and live forever? And I can assure you that I, that the maintenance on this will be well-done because that's what we, that's our, that's what we do, is we take good care of our parks and our playgrounds, and so does the school district, so.
Council, our policy, we don't have a $500,000 category, but I'm sure we can create one. If somebody wants to donate that much, including naming rights.
There you go.
We'll do about anything for that amount.
But we're calling it the Meadowcrest Playground right along with the school because that just makes it easier. But yes, any large donations, I'd be happy to discuss that with them directly. They can contact me.
I mean, and I don't want to be, play down the $10 and the $25 because, or $100 or whatever it is, if you, that people can afford to be involved in the community and to be involved in something as wonderful as this. You know, that, those are so important to, to the community. I mean, for the, not only the money, but the involvement and the sense of ownership in the park, so. But, you know, really would be nice if somebody would help us because the people that are already listed have put in sizable amounts of money, and so I'm making a pitch.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that. Every pitch helps. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Palmer?
I just want to say how excited I am. I drove by there today. I drive by there most days, and the school is framed and really coming along in the last couple of weeks. Our youngest son went to preschool for two years there at Hillcrest, and I know what wonderful staff they have. And I can remember going out there with them at recess, and they would look over at, at that time, it was a newer playground at the North Renton, or the Highlands, North Highlands. So this is, I can just see all those, I appreciate the detail you gave us tonight with the different areas, the wavy sidewalk and the hills and the outdoor classrooms because it's much easier to visualize just how special that's going to be. Thank you. Thank you all for working so hard.
I think this ribbon cutting will be one of a kind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
Thank you.
Good. Well, well, thank you all again very much. And as I said when I opened the meeting, I'm also very excited about it. That site is, is going to be wonderful, not just for the kids that come in to use the accessible features, but there's probably a thousand kids, you know, that can walk to that site. And in our case, I've been in my home like 26 years, and that was the playground all my kids used when, when they were little. So there's a lot of children in that neighborhood still, so. Terrific. Thank you so much for putting all this together. We're really looking forward to that ribbon cutting, like you say.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll, with that, we'll move on to emerging issues, is that right? That concludes the playground discussion. Okay.
Terry has another 45 minutes to go.
I know, I know. I was surprised you didn't use it. Actually, Don could continue his pitch for a moment. So we added this because, in large part, we ran out of time last week when we were going around just discussing involvement. So, Mr. Taylor, want to give you some time?
I'll be brief, but I did want to just bring back a little bit of information that's been percolating on the Committee in Homelessness Governing Board. Didn't get a chance to talk about it at our last meeting because we had an upcoming meeting for the governing board, and in addition to that, we also had our legislative breakfast. But I just want to start off by saying that over the last three governing board meetings, and we meet quarterly, we've had the presence of the Occupy Committee in Homelessness Group. And if you don't know who they are, these are mostly single adult homeless individuals who populate places like Nicholsville, the Tent City. And they were wanting to, they brought to us last year during the summer, a list of concerns that they had. One of those concerns being the need for us to think about prioritizing shelter units. When the Tenure Plan in Homelessness began in '05, shelter units wasn't a priority because the idea was to take people from temporary housing to permanent housing. And our goal was set at 9,500 units. That was the goal we set. Little did we know that, you know, the recession downturn would hit us so hard and create even a more densely homeless population. So we went into our mid, mid-plan review efforts to take a look, recalibrate, figure out what we could do to try to match up with the current needs that are out there. So in October, at our meeting, what we decided to do, we had put together a task force back in 2011 to study the different parameters of what we could do to provide better services to the adult, single homeless population. And I've got a report that was put together by a policy analyst with Sound Cities for the PIC meeting that we just had last week. I want to just go over some of the higher points on it. So it talked about the Tenure Plan in Homelessness that was approved in '06. And as I mentioned, you know, our goal was 9,500 units. To date, you know, we have, we're more than halfway there. We've put together about 50, 100 permanent housing units. And we've got some programs that have been making some significant positive strides throughout this. One of them in particular is called the Landlord Liaison Program, which is a very creative program that has allowed individuals who typically are shut out from housing because of things like bankruptcies, foreclosures, evictions, criminal histories, they can't pass typical rent background checks. This program provides the assurances to landlords that if they provide housing units for these individuals, that they don't have to worry about security deposits, they don't have to worry about those types of issues. And it's been very successful. To date, over 1,000 formerly homeless individuals or families have been placed in rental housing. We also have what's called a coordinated entry system. Prior to this system, it used to be a burden for individuals who were looking for housing units because they would have to call multiple agencies, cities, et cetera. And with our coordinated entry system, it's a one-call, one-application process that gets them into the system, and they can be matched up with the appropriate services that they're looking for. And that's been just, it really has been a wonderful system for, for those individuals because in many cases, some of them are bouncing around town, using public transportation, losing time off work. It's just been, you know, very instrumental in reducing a lot of those disparities. So it was assumed that shelters would play a decreasing role as homeless individuals and families were moved into permanent housing due to the recession. However, the number of individuals who are experiencing homelessness has increased, and there are not enough shelter beds available to meet that need. There are 1,704 year-round facility-based shelter beds in King County. I was surprised to find that that 1,704 shelter beds, 91% of those are in Seattle. And that 4% are in South County, 5% East County, 1% North County. Our 1,550 of them are in Seattle. I think we got 65 adult, single shelter units here in South County. East County's got 75, and I think there's about five in North County. So, and then, of course, we've got about 450 to 700 beds that have been added for the winter response to severe shelter for this, this winter season. So the Committee to, Committee in Homelessness asked our Single Adult Shelter Task Force to explore options to address the immediate unmet shelter and housing needs of individual unsheltered adults in King County. And in October, we amended that, that effort so that they can get back to us and give us some, some feedback in terms of some options that we could consider. The Single Adult Task Force report included recommendations to implement adult, single, adult shelter, and some of those recommendations were, one, to look at the role of the shelter units, articulate the role of shelter under the Tenure Plan. They were going to take a look at data, how we can better use data to inform policy and investments in order to transform our shelter system. Also to look at resource needs, what resources and investments are needed to support the transformation. The first recommendation was to provide additional shelter beds in those areas that are deficient right now. That means expanding capacity in South County, East County, also in the Northern County as well. Another recommendation deals with long-term shelter stayers in Seattle. As I mentioned, 91% of the shelter beds are in Seattle. There are about 629 people in Seattle shelters who stay at shelters in excess of six months. And those 629 people represent a cohort of 26% of 2,500 individuals who stay in shelter units 180 days or more, and thereby using up 74% of the shelter night beds. That was an area that we thought had great opportunity for us to try to understand why these individuals are utilizing shelter units for that long period of time. And looking at it from the standpoint of what are we not doing to better assist those individuals? What are we not doing to help them to get into temporary housing that would lead to permanent housing sooner as opposed to looking at it in a different way? One other recommendation to note was an effort to work with cities to change regulatory barriers to allow for the siting and development of shelters. So we had some real interesting conversations about it. There was even some dialogue about taking a look at places like Tent City. And the idea was, we talked a little bit about whether or not Tent Cities could be viewed as some form of a temporary shelter system in view of the fact that we are, we're woefully under-capacitated right now. But that was just a little talk. We didn't come to any decisions on, on how we would deal with that one way or the other. But one thing that was really clear that resonated to me was during the last couple of meetings where we had the committee, excuse me, the Occupy, the Committee in Homelessness individuals there, they were very passionate in relaying to us what they are experiencing because what we've, what we've done, we've have we've done, we have prioritized chronic homelessness, we've also prioritized family homelessness, along with our veterans and youth homelessness. But adult, single individuals, they have not been held on the priority list. In fact, when I look at our dashboard and I look at where we are year-to-date in the plan, the Tenure Plan, we're at about 80% of fulfillment on all of those areas that I just mentioned, with the exception of the adult, single shelter units. We're at about 23% there. So, and these are individuals that are, the big question that came up was, what are we going to, what's going to have to? We understood there was going to be a fiscal impact here, in terms of prioritizing the adult, single shelters, because we only have so much funding, and it would take additional funding to fund everything. But one thing we all did agree on was that, when you look at someone who's living out on the street, you know, you kind of, and I made an analogy of, it's kind of like going into an emergency ward, you know? You always want to think about triaging those patients who need services and help the most. And frankly, anybody who's not sheltered is one of those individuals. So that means that they are needed. And so for that reason, we need to figure out how we can increase the funding to meet the needs of everybody. So those were some of the conversations that we had. Again, I mentioned that some of the speakers there that spoke from the Occupy Committee in Homelessness, they echoed a common sentiment, which was, housing creates opportunity that links them into the intersections of services. If you don't have a place to live, it becomes almost, you know, impossible to have a job, to have people to be able to reach you, to have a community in which you can function like any other individual. So I think that the thing, that the turning point over the past couple of meetings has been very significant, in that we are looking towards making this a priority. And currently, the funding group is trying to figure out the next steps of what that could look like in terms of impacts, in terms of funding cost, and those types of things. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Has there been any conversation, Greg, on the elimination of the ride-free zone and the impact it's had on the homeless population?
The rent-free zone?
Ride-free zone.
Ride-free zone. I'm not sure about that. I haven't, we haven't discussed that. I haven't heard anything about that.
As far as access to services?
I'm not aware of anything. Doesn't mean that it isn't, but I haven't, we haven't discussed anything about that. Do you know anything about that?
No.
Have you heard anything about that?
No. But I figured if you guys.
I've heard.
What have you heard?
I read about it in the paper, and they were complaining about it. The City of Seattle contributed money to Metro to run a shuttle from the Pioneer Square area up to Pill Hill. And it runs, I think, just on the weekdays during the day. City of Seattle used to, I want to say it's about $400,000 a year, put into Metro for the ride-free zone. And so they took the money that they had been subsidizing that with and set up the shuttle system.
Okay.
Now, what I read in the paper is that people want it to run further, longer hours and so on, but that was the solution, the immediate solution to that, recognizing that it was going to affect the needy.
Another thing, too, that I would add is that back in October, we also agreed that aside from focusing on housing units, that's the goal, that's the basis of the plan, we also need to be thinking about how can we create stability, in the sense of individuals being able to support themselves, you know, and having dignity, and helping individuals enter back into mainstream lifestyles, as opposed to, I mean, if we could find a way to be successful doing that, that in itself frees up more housing units as you help people pass through, et cetera. And then I also had an opportunity back in October, I believe, to attend a meeting with HUD Secretary Sean Donovan, who came down and met with a few of us and some individuals from some other groups. And we met at the Seattle Housing Authority. And he came down to let us know that the president has committed to wanting, at the federal level, making the effort to end homelessness by 2020. And that one of the key focuses is on veterans homelessness. And we began to start having some exploratory conversations about how can the federal government provide some forms of supports, not necessarily in the sense of funding, but in the sense of agency coordination that can provide opportunities for collaboration, that can free up those types of resources, and work in conjunction with our existing infrastructure to try to come up with some ideas to move this forward. And that was very encouraging, to hear that that commitment still remains there on the Beltway, so.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Not a problem.
I think with that, I'm going to go ahead and call a close to Committee of the Hall. Yeah, we're adjourned.